But I don't know when that's going to take place.
Any other questions? We will now hear from, we will now hear public comments. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. We ask that you please state your name and address before giving your comments.
Yes, he's one of, one of the folks that signed up. We'll just go through the list as they signed up. The applicant was the first one, Philip Simmons.
Yeah, hi, my name is Philip Simmons. I live at thirty-six seventy Old Charleston Road on Johns Island. My family owns a property at twenty-eight fifty-six Kane Slash Road. As you know, it's a small parcel, only two point three nine acres. Our family has called Johns Island home for almost ninety years, and we still live on the island today. So any changes to the community, we want to be positive. Our whole goal, since it's two minutes, is we're trying to get in front of the development so we have some flexibility. So if we do decide to develop, then we have the flexibility to putting something in that's got some residential and commercial use to help the community with some small, like coffee shops or services situations. So people can, in the community, can use that area without having to travel all the way off the island and back on. So that is why we're trying to go ahead and see if we can get this rezoned.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Morris?
Is there any reason that y'all haven't looked into annexing into the city?
No, most of our properties we have, multiple properties are in Charleston County. I mean technically, we're just like Charleston County.
Just familiarity with it, I gotcha, okay.
Mr. Davis?
Is there, I'm looking at the comparison between the limited commercial and the mixed use. Is there something that you have been prohibited from doing under the limited commercial?
I'm sorry, we have no plans immediately to do anything, but when the hospital comes in and there's more, more needs for the area, we thought maybe a commercial with a residential dwelling on top, so maybe we can house some of the hospital workers and have convenient, small businesses for the local community.
Mr. Morris?
This may be a bit out of order, it's not necessarily for the applicant, but mixed use or the combination of uses can happen within the limited commercial district, right?
That is correct, yeah. So, single-family detached is allowed, I'm just going through the list. Duplex, triplex, fourplex, and single-family attached is allowed. And a variety of commercial is allowed. So the, the big difference is the multifamily part. From what I'm hearing, the description, you wouldn't, it may be difficult to have that commercial on the first floor and then residential above and that kind of multifamily layout. So you could have an alternative housing types with commercial, but it wouldn't be a multifamily stacked, like apartment or condo building, yeah.
Just some clear, some clarity on that. Could you, so even if it was a small fourplex above a storefront, that would not be allowable under limited commercial? Are we talking bigger density than that? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, we have not, I mean, I don't know that our definition of fourplex contemplates it being a commercial on the, on the lower level. It's more of a, like an all siloed residential structure, right?
Thank you.
Something they could get a variance for if they wanted to try that in the future?
You can't get a variance for a use type thing like that, so, I don't think so, no.
Well, the, the use is there, I think, right? It's, I'm talking about the stacking.
Right, yeah. I, I think the form of it, like I said, and our definitions of those duplex, triplex, and four, fourplex doesn't necessarily contemplate that. We've never had that request, so I'd have to look into that to see how that would be utilized. And normally, that's done in our commercial zoning districts where multifamily is allowed.
Mr. LaSane?
Thanks, uh, this would probably be more a question for staff, but if this property were to be annexed into the city in that same designation area right now, what would its current zoning be? Would it just be a limited business? Or would they be able to annex in at a more density, you know, heightened zoning district due to the area right now and what's around it if they were in the city of Charleston?
I'm, I'm trying to answer, but the, the municipalities can annex in a piece of property and attach whatever zoning that they choose to. So that would be up to the decision makers with the city if, if it were, there was a request for the annexation.
Okay.
So that was my short answer, saying I don't know what the city would attach zoning-wise to this, to this property if there was a request to annex it.
Okay, so theoretically, they could apply for a PUD or come in as a mixed use. I know the city does have some properties in that area that currently do allow multifamily and hotels, motels. I think the, I think the hotels or the motels are capped at like twenty rooms or something like that. And that may be under a, I think maybe a general commercial zoning or something like that right now.
Could be, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker?
Peter Rubino? No, she didn't, she had to speak, yes. I think she's.
Hello, my name is Peter Rubino. I live at three zero zero nine Tugelo Street. It's about a mile from this subject property. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Johns Island Task Force and the Johns Island Council, who both oppose this upzoning. Property is about a half a mile to one of the biggest traffic issue intersections that we have on Johns Island, being River Road and Maybank Highway. The BCD's cog, as at our level of service, are rated at F or worse, and they don't really have a rating lower than, than F. We cannot support additional residential development that is being zoned, upzoned by as much as sixty percent to our already overwhelmed infrastructure. We should not even start looking at any upzoning until the infrastructure level of service gets to at least an E, which is still pretty horrible. We need infrastructure, infrastructure help first, like the second lane off of Maybank Highway and the realignment of Kane Slash Road to the Southern Pitchfork to help reduce some of that impact at River and Main Road. I mean, River and Maybank. Changes to the Maybank Highway corridor overlay zoning district, which was, which involved the county council or county staff and a lot of community engagement and input to allow spot zoning changes, undoes some of that work that was approved and agreed on. Limited commercial to mixed use allows apartments or hotel development. Once granted, it goes with the parcel if the current owners decide to sell. Then what stops other parcel owners to also request additional upzoning once one's been approved. Development, the developers talk about a walkable mixed-use development, but the parcel is on a two-lane country road and a barely two-lane dirt road, neither of which have sidewalks or bikeways, bike lanes. Current zoning doesn't stop the development, it just limits it and must follow what the current zoning has already been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Kershaw?
Good afternoon, my name is Susan Kershaw. I live at thirty-six oh five Berry Hill Road, just down the island a little bit. I'm, I would like you guys to recommend disapproval for this for two main reasons. A lot of time and effort and compromises went into establishing this overlay district. And we should have a high bar to overrule what was agreed upon, I think, four years ago. This, this is a case which seems to not have a problem it wants to solve. They don't know what they want to put on it yet, and they don't know when they're going to do it. And so it seems like this can wait until we have more information so that we can make a better decision about whether to overrule all of the work that went into that overlay district. Second reason is the traffic. We have to allow a certain amount of development on Johns Island that's all within the current zoning, but we don't have to allow people to upzone and put more density on the island until we have approval, at least approval, for ways off the island and preferably until we have actually solved the problem of us all getting off the island before we approve more density. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker that signed up, Tori Sanders?
My name is Tori Sanders. I serve as the Communities and Transportation Project Manager for the Coastal Conservation League at one thirty-one Spring Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. The increase in density requested by the applicant feels significant in an area where infrastructure is still struggling to catch up with development. The current zoning already allows for plenty of density and flexibility of use that would be compatible with the surrounding area. Granted, this rezoning could also set a precedent. Many of the nearby parcels that are also designated as limited commercial could request an upzoning to mixed use as well. We recognize that this parcel exists within the urban growth boundary and on higher ground. But even with the UGB, not, excuse me, even within the UGB, not every parcel needs to be mixed use, especially on Johns Island. This will further impact the rural character that Johns Islanders are trying desperately to hold on to. The limited commercial parcels were zoned in such a way for that reason. While the applicant has stated there is no development plan for years to come, we have no way to guarantee that. Once this rezoning is permitted, there is nothing that says they must wait to construct their mixed-use development until the surrounding public infrastructure has been deemed sufficient enough to accommodate it. The surrounding parcels are single-family residences and a low-impact tree business. A mixed-use development located here at the present time does not make sense or seem compatible. At the current time, neither Bluebird Road nor Kane Slash Road can accommodate this type of density, and adding additional pressures on the intersection of Maybank Highway and River Road feels irresponsible. Thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns. We respectfully ask that this rezoning be denied at the present time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was it?
Okay, this case is now closed for public comment. Is there a motion and a second from the commission?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, my motion would be to approve the applicant. Staff has done a thorough job in vetting and ensuring that the criteria has been met, and the criteria has been met to allow the applicant to move forward with the rezon. So I would put forth the motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, there's no seconds, so that motion fails.
Wait, didn't you second, did you second, or no?
No, I'm not seconding.
No, did he?
There's no, no second.
I'll second. If we need a second, I'll second, for discussion.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve, and Mr. McConnell seconds the motion, okay. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
No doubt about it. No doubt about it, we've had a ninety, a hundred and ninety-plus responses to the request, all of which were negative and a handful that were for it. The comprehensive plan was formed with the discussion, big discussion with the residents of Johns Island, and we saw that in the recently published comprehensive plan. We have to take notice of what the, the residents say of the island, and the residents, it's a hundred and ninety of them, it's a fair, fair number who are opposed to this plan, and I don't think that they can be ignored. I think also that the comments of the Johns Island Task Force, Coastal Conservation League, about the inadequacy of the infrastructure is very relevant. And also the comment that is made that this is a precedent, so other applicants could be made to change the rezoning, adding more pressure to the infrastructure. I could go on, but we've all seen the comments from the, from the residents, which makes sense, and I certainly would oppose this rezoning.
Mr. Davis?
I, I'm also in opposition to mixed use here, and I, I do think that there was actually a lot of forethought in 2021 when they did this overlay district. If you look at what is allowed under the existing commercial, limited commercial, that is pretty heavy density for this Kane Slash Road back in 2021, and I think going forward for a number of years. And so if the corner of River Road has not even been developed commercial, that's more appropriate. And I'm not saying it should be, but that's even more appropriate for hotel, gas station. These things that cannot fit in the box of limited commercial but do fit in mixed use, how are we going to already work our way up towards the neighborhoods and give this higher density? So I'll be voting in opposition.
Mr. LaSane?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to really just kind of put forth the thought process of how difficult it is to base some of our decisions on retrospect. Because honestly, in retrospect, traffic is a concern. But voters, way more than a hundred and ninety-three, had opportunities to make changes that would have allowed traffic to be better in Johns Island. Voters voted against those changes that would have allowed these things to occur. So to utilize a hundred and ninety-three number of people that are now saying they don't want it when they could have made things better before, just doesn't feel, doesn't feel fair to, to a property owner that has actually met the criteria as listed in our ZLDR. To go against that is to have me questioned, what's it there for?
Mr. Morris?
So I do want to, you mentioned criteria in the ZLDR. I believe that the argument that is being put forth was that the comprehensive plan is not accurate because it didn't foresee the growth that was needed. And so they're saying that this property is too lowly zoned for the growth that Johns Island has seen, correct? That, the argument from the applicant is essentially that the comprehensive, because this would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So the argument is that the limited commercial use in the ZLDR is just outdated for the current growth that the island has seen.
Right, they're using examples of some of the developments that have occurred surrounding it, yes.
And, and to that end, I could also argue that the comprehensive plan isn't incorrect because the comprehensive plan says that there should be a gradation of decreased density down to the urban growth boundary. So I don't know if it's necessarily that the criteria were met or not met. And obviously, staff says may have been met because they're not going to be the final arbiters, and we're just giving a recommendation because we're not either. So to that end, I am appreciative that the applicant pointed out that it seems like a mistake in the ZLDR to not have some kind of allowance for mixed use in smaller or less dense zoning applications. Like, let's say it was looking like a single-family residence, like a two thousand, twenty-five hundred square foot building with residential on the second floor, commercial on the bottom floor. That would be a mixed-use building, but it would be a, you know, slight impact mixed-use building. I think there's something that we can look at with that. But to that end, I, I believe that I would be in opposition to the current motion for the reason that, well, one, some of the entitlements in the mixed-use district, such as a hotel, motel, gas station, I know that that's a conditional use, but these are entitlements that would carry with the property regardless of whether the applicant provides them or not. So he could sell them to someone, and then you get something that he may not have wanted and the community may not want. And, and honestly, I feel like a more aggressive use for the site, maybe annexing into the city, would be a better option, or subdividing the lots to become more of that neighborhood feel. Because again, I think that, like, let's say at the corner of Kane Slash and the road to the south of it, you could have like a two thousand square foot building with residential above and commercial below. But I think that the mixed-use zoning would turn into something much larger and a bit out of scale for that. So that's why I might have to be in opposition.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I just want to take issue that was made by the commissioner, that the members of Johns Island voted against infrastructure. Are we referring to I twenty-six, the extension? I don't think any Johns Islander has opposed the Southern Pitchfork, which has been there, mooted, or sorry, proposed probably about fifteen years. I think they're wanting it. I think they want more infrastructure there. I don't think that they're opposed to it. I don't think they ever were able to vote for them. I think they was expected, and it was indicated to be provided by council. It never happened.
Any other comments?
This is my new pitch. You know, regionally, we have a problem, right? We have limited land area to develop, and we have a tremendous influx of population coming to this region. It's anticipated that two hundred and seventy thousand more people will move to the Charleston region in the next twenty years. That's equivalent to the amount of people who have moved here in the last twenty years. It's equivalent to the same population of North Charleston and South Charleston combined, a complete replacement. We know that doing things the way we've been doing things, we know what that leads to. It leads to unsustainable housing price inflation. It leads to displacement, mostly of vulnerable populations and poor people. You look at the peninsula, that used to be sixty, fifty percent African-Americans, now maybe twenty, maybe twelve. That's happening all over. We are eliminating the opportunities for people and families to stay in this community long-term as they're being replaced by people who are coming from off. My take on that is that if there are areas which are on high ground and can accommodate some of the growth, I will consistently be supporting of that if it's within the urban growth boundary. We cannot both simultaneously protect the urban growth boundary and say no development outside of that, and then say no development within it as well. Those times cannot, those are not sustainable policies any longer. We have to find a better way forward. So I will be supporting this under that understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if there's no further discussion, it's time for a vote.
Commissioner Davis?
And just to clarify, this is a vote in opposition, correct?
This, this is a, a vote in, in support
Votes in support.
Of staff, staff's recommendation. So if you're in opposition, you would vote against it.
Nay.
If you were in support of it, you would vote in the affirmative.
Nay.
Commissioner LaSane?
I vote for.
Commissioner Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Nay.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Nay.
The motion failed.
County council will hear this request at their public hearing on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in council chambers.
Go ahead, Andrea.
So if the motion failed, do we need a motion and the opposite? And just to remind, like, we haven't run into this for a long time because we haven't been down this many members, but we do need a supermajority, so we need at least five folks to vote one way or the other according to the ordinance.
This is a unique topic in, in the ordinance and rules of procedure. A majority vote of the entire membership is required to approve or disapprove a comp plan amendment. So there needs to be five in one direction or the other, even though we don't have a full quorum of nine people.
It says it's passive, right? If it doesn't make you.
Mr. Bell?
Commission members, if I'm understanding the planning staff and the rules correctly, then the current rule is if we are making changes to the comp plan, then that is what requires the majority votes and the entire body, which is then the five votes. And here we have two requests, we have a, a comp plan amendment and a map amendment, which is curating the majority vote. And regarding then the other matter, and the motion on the floor then did fail, and so right, right now, there is no recommendation from this body. And so planning staff is requesting the body make a recommendation to go to council.
Yeah, yeah. I think that, I think that both the text amendment and the, and the comp plan requires five, but I, yes. For the motion to move forward, you would need the five. But you don't need five to, if it's not going to change. You have, you have five people, more than five people sitting here to vote. So, so you have five members, but to move forward, you need five. But you don't have to have five for it to not move forward, right, right.
So it's, it's failed?
Yes.
Okay. Will county council still hear it?
Yes. It takes a five supermajority to amend the comp plan from a recommendation point of view. Did I get all that straight?
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure what, what kind of recommendation would go to council. Just no recommendation then?
We'll get what's legal about that, yeah.
Okay. I believe county council will hear this request at their public hearing on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in council chambers. And again, at their September eleven, twenty twenty-five Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at five PM, the request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. The next item on the agenda is ZREZ dash zero six dash two five dash zero zero one six three, a request to rezone T one zero dash zero six dash zero zero six dash zero zero dash zero one eight and dash one three two from the neighborhood commercial zoning district to the community commercial zoning district. Before we ask staff to present, it's my understanding that the applicant wishes to request a deferral. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. My name is Jacob Allen. I'm an attorney with Maynard-Nexon, and we're representing the applicant in this project. And as mentioned, yes, we are requesting a deferral to next month's meeting on August eleven.
All right, thank you. So staff is prepared to give a presentation. Do we want, for the benefit of the commission, to hear that now or to wait until the applicant brings that back? Is there any preference, one way or the other?
Would there be any updates to the presentation when he comes back in a month? Or would it be the same presentation that we'd be seeing?
We don't know that, yeah. I think the applicant wants to regroup and.
I, I would prefer to wait.
Okay.
Same.
Okay. So I believe we need a motion and a second for a deferral.
We have to defer.
Okay.
Second, yeah.
Okay. It's called, so we've got a motion to defer? Mr. Jones? And the second was?
I think I may.
Mr. Davis?
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSane?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you. The next item on, items on the agenda are proposed amendments to the zoning and land development regulations ordinance. I believe Mr. Carlisle will discuss.
Yeah, good afternoon again. So these are proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, and they're intended to implement the comp plan, reduce the BZA caseload, and improve resilience and sustainability and be consistent with adjacent jurisdictions. and be consistent with adjacent jurisdictions. And so the, the first amendments, proposed amendments, basically just distinguish between clearing and grubbing activities, just basically adding, you know, as you can see, adding ore, because it is two different, you know, clearing is clearing things above the surface, scrubbing is when you start dealing with stuff kind of in the soil. So this is just to help clarify that, make it more understandable and as far as enforcing code and whatnot as well, helps with that. Going on to the next proposed amendment. So this amendment and the next amendment, they simplify grand tree violation and mitigation fees and prohibit variances for violation mitigation fees. So basically saying you can't ask for a variance for the mitigation fees, and then this proposed amendment specifies the amount. And that was arrived at by kind of looking at the surrounding jurisdictions, what they're doing. That was where the number came up of the 250 per inch. Going on to the next. This changed for setbacks would prohibit structural and nonstructural fill material in setbacks unless approved by the Public Works Director. This is one of the amendments, kind of working with Public Works, that they, they are, were interested in. Going on to the next. So 8.4.9, it changes the requirements for the approval of road and drainage plans to occur before the approval of preliminary plaits and prohibit permanent best management practices such as ponds and underground storage systems for roads to be accepted by the county. And then the following one, 8.52, will require as-built surveys and stormwater permanent maintenance covenants prior to final plat approval. So 9.2.1(c), so this amends the definition of tree removal to require BZA approval for healthy branches, limbs, and/or stems with a DBH of eight inches or greater that originate from below four and a half feet from ground level. And 9.2.4.e, these changes would allow administrative approval of grand tree encroachment up to thirty-five percent with an approved arborist treatment plan. So it also includes adding the definition of a tree preservation plan to Chapter 12. The next is to correct the term caliper to diameter. My understanding is that caliper refers to nursery trees, while diameter at breast height is used for trees in the wild, as it were. So this kind of corrects that, provides greater specificity. And then this is a, adding a definition for temporary driveway. And the public input received were basically one comment for each of these that are listed, either in support or opposition. And this was noticed as required. And then we have Kyle Foster here for any questions on the tree ordinances, and Chris Wanamaker for anything with Public Works. And I'd happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Lynn. We appreciate the report. Any questions for staff? Mr. McConnell?
Quick question, going back to the fill and setbacks. I guess that's going to be case by case. That's going to require you to review every site plan? Are you already doing that with your staff as, as part of your MS4 permitting and so forth?
We are reviewing every site plan, whether it's rod, living space, shed, everything that comes through. As y'all know, we've taken a pretty strategic stance to try and get the, you know, the fill where you drive down. Piddly Hills Road, there's a house five feet higher than one side, it's a couple of long way. Currently, fill with the setback is not exclusively allowed, nor is explicitly up. So we've just made sure it's very clear, we're already, no fill, no block, or not doing this thing. But arguing it back next door, so it's just clarified.
Describe a situation where you may allow fill?
Sure, for like a driveway, you know, you need three inches of fill. Put the driveway properly in, be able to breathe, put up a cover on pipe for some reason. You just can never control it.
Permitting process, permit, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Under 9.2.1(c), tree removal, the text that was added there, do we, do we already have something in place specifically with regards that we're adding this removal of limitation on removal of branches, limbs, or stems with a DBH of eight inches or greater?
So currently, we do not. And the reason why the eight inches there is cited is because trees of eight inches and more are counted towards the grand total of the tree if it has several trunks. If one's below eight inches, that tree's not, you know, that trunk isn't counted as part of the grand total that's out of the tree. This ordinance in particular came about because a builder was going to put a house on property, and one of the trees had a, a branch off of it that was eight inches in diameter, and when you add it up with the, with the larger trunk, it was a grand tree. But the, that one eight-inch branch did not constitute more than a quarter of the canopy, and so they were able to remove that branch, thus making the tree not a grand tree. And then at that point, they could have, they could have removed or approached into. At, at that point, it's not grand. So it's not a very common thing I've, I run into, but I imagine that this is, this might occur more often in the future.
It's, it's for the multi-trunk trees? It's not for the single? So our, our definition of a multi-trunk tree is all of the stems of that tree, of that base that comes off eight inches or more. And they all get added up when it's a multi-trunk tree? Yeah.
As of, as of right now, how is the ordinance stated for, you know, let's say, going in and doing some pruning?
As it states now?
Like, what, what diameter can I prune without?
There's no, there's no mention of specific diameters, just that you can't remove more than a quarter of the leaf surface of, of the tree. But if that one trunk of, of, didn't constitute more than a quarter, you could legally take off that branch, even though it was added up to the grand total of the tree.
Okay.
That's just for an area that's affecting the height at which you measure the tree?
Right, four and a half feet alone.
Right.
Four and a half foot, there's more than, that one stem, they have to gather.
Right. Any other questions? I don't believe we've had any public comment for this, and no one signed up?
No one signed up, which is very strange. But good.
On these changes, is there a motion and a second from the commission? We have a motion to approve and a second. There any discussion from commission members? Okay. Let's call the roll.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lusane?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you. County Council will hear this request at their public hearing on August 26, 2025, at 6:30 PM in council chambers. And again, at their September 11, 2025 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5 PM. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. The last item on the agenda is the chair's remarks, which I have none. If there's no further business, this meeting of the Charleston County Planning Commission stands adjourned. The Planning Commission will hold its next regularly-scheduled meeting on Monday, August 11, 2025, beginning at 2 PM in council chambers. Thank you.